Okay, we'll get started now. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the order of the Sodik City Council Meeting for April 26, 2021. Clerk, please take the role, reminding councilperson to make sure you state what community you're zooming in on this evening.
Here, Sagatuck County of Alligan, State of Michigan.
Leo?
Here, Sagatuck County of Alligan, Michigan.
Louis?
City of Sagatuck, Alligan County, Michigan.
Peterson?
Key West, Monroe County, State of Florida.
Stanton?
Here, Sagatuck County, Alligan, Michigan.
Truster, I believe, is not.
Ken called and excused absence.
And Beckett.
Present, Douglas, Alligan County, Michigan. Next order of business is approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the regular city council meetings, meeting minutes of April 12, 2021.
Mr. Mayor, this is Chris.
Yes.
I move to approve the regular city council meeting of April 12, 2021.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion by Peterson, second by Louis, to approve the minutes from our April 12, 2021 meeting. Counsel, do you have any questions, comments, corrections? If none, would the clerk please call the role on the motion?
Chris Peterson?
Yeah.
Thank you. Louis?
Yes. Yes.
No?
Yes.
Hampton? Yes.
And Beckett.
Yes. A motion passes unanimously. Next, we will approve minutes from our special city council meeting of April 15, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, this is Garn. Move to approve the minutes of April 15, 2021, City Council's special meeting.
Second.
We have a motion by Louis, second by Dean, to approve the council minutes of the April 15, 2021 meeting. Question, or the council have any questions, corrections, comments? If none, would the clerk please call the role on the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yeah. Hampton? Yes.
And Beckett.
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. There are no mayor's comments this evening. Ryan, do you have anything to add from the city manager comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council and guests. The city manager's report is on page nine of your packet. Councilman Dean did request an update on the social district and the pop-up patio. So we did update the city manager's report with that information, which includes the fact that there are three active social district businesses with eight pending. And as far as the pop-up patios, there are 15 that have been permitted. And Lieutenant Enfield is aware that council would enjoy an update from him as well, so we could look forward to that. Outside of that, we did include some, some pictures of the, the new police vehicle that you all purchased. So that's included in the, in the packet as well, page 11 there. Thank you, Aaron. And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Ryan. Are there any changes to the, to this evening's agenda? Your city manager, council have anything to add?
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. If none, we'll now move on to guest speaker portion of our meeting this evening. Who was that?
Aaron, I'm sorry to interrupt. Dan, two guest speakers for the fire department.
Yeah, that's, we'll be adding, right, as guest speaker D.
My apologies.
Dan Fox, Sodik Township Fire District. Okay, thank you, Aaron, for reminding me. First speaker this evening is Lieutenant Brett Enfield from Allen County Sheriff's Department. Brett, are you out there?
Yes. Evening. How are you guys, how are you guys doing tonight? At least, at least the weather is a little bit nicer, so, um, yeah, a couple of things, um, just to update on the social district. Spoke to Ryan a little bit about that earlier in the week. Um, we haven't had any issues reported with any of the alcohol coming from the establishments at all. Speaking with the reserves over this weekend, we did see some more inundation of the solar cups coming probably from the private residences, but other than that, you know, obviously, we were just educating and speaking with the individuals on a case-by-case basis with, with those, uh, those findings and so forth, but nothing, uh, issues with the directly related to the social districts. The, uh, speaking with Deputy Kling, he said that the, uh, he appreciates the support of the new police cruiser. He said it is great. He wanted me to pass that along to, uh, to the board that, uh, he's very appreciative of, uh, the new vehicle and, uh, he'll take very good care of it. Um, I saw, did see last week that there was a letter written, um, about the speeding problem on Main Street. Um, I had, uh, the sheriff's department sergeant that night throw up the, uh, county speed sign up there. The stats for the week up there in the primary officers, the broader in that area as a more directed, uh, speed enforcement and, um, uh, we interviewed like six or eight marine positions that we need to fill for this year. We had, uh, quite a few longtime employees, uh, per se, retired with the part-timers on the marine patrol. Uh, so we're working through that process and the selection process on that. And then we also did interviews for, full-time deputy positions where we anticipate having several openings through retirement and, uh, over the next several months to six months, uh, throughout the year. So that's about it, I think. So if anybody has any questions, go ahead, feel free to ask.
Counsel, any questions for Lieutenant Enfield this evening?
Oh, uh, Mark, this is Garn. So Brad, I'm sorry, you got a lot of wind action going on there, so.
Oh, yeah, sorry about that.
All good.
I was just, I was outside walking, so.
Double multitasking. I like it.
Yep, multitasking, yep.
Hey, just real quick about the social districts. So really, from your opinion, nothing really out of hand with, uh, people's behavior?
No, not, not, not right now, no. Um, you know, obviously, the weather's been on the cooler side and, uh, um, you know, I personally had driven down there a couple of times through the weekend and stuff and, you know, I did not see anything that, you know, rose, even, you know, driving not in a police car or anything like that, that you saw that goes out of, uh, ordinary, uh, for the area, so, nope.
Okay, and no increase in calls from residents about people?
Um, not, not that was brought to my attention, no, so.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Scott?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the lieutenant for the, uh, for the report out of that and Ryan for the report from the, for the statistics. It sounds, Lieutenant, like, if I'm hearing you correctly, it's mostly a matter of education as opposed to an issue with anti-social behavior.
Yeah, we're, you know, I mean, yeah, we're, you know, for that type of stuff, we're not, you know, we're just going up and talking to people, um, you know, as, as you would, uh, you know, just a casual contact with somebody, try to do some education. We're not, you know, pulling complaint numbers or, you know, asking people for their names and so forth, you know. You know, we're just trying to do a little bit more education with it, with the, uh, the district and stuff and try to keep a handle on it, so.
Good. Appreciate you, the deputies doing that. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other council person wish to, uh, ask any questions from Lieutenant Enfield? Okay, uh, looks like we're gonna be moving in. Thanks, Brett, for, uh, visiting with us this evening. We appreciate it.
No problem. And I'll get the complaint logs to you guys. I was remiss on getting those out, uh, just because I had those interviews and stuff last week and, uh, didn't get them out. So I'll, I'll get those out and get it to air and, uh, email to you guys, so.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Uh, we'll be on to our next, next guest speaker, Kathy Brockington. I don't know if she's actually representing the League of Women Voters, although I know she's quite, uh, active in the Holland League of Women Voters and she's on presentation tonight on, uh, redistricting in, uh, Michigan of our congressional districts. Kathy?
Hit unmute, sorry.
That's all right.
Yes, I am here representing the League of Women Voters of Michigan and as I, this is a spiel. We are a nonpartisan organization that encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government. The league does not support or oppose parties or candidates. You might be familiar with our efforts to educate voters through our nonpartisan voter guides and candidate forums. We do take positions on issues after studying them. We were formed in 1920 as an outgrowth of the suffragists movement and we're in 50 states and here in Michigan, we have 27 local leagues and membership is open to anyone 16 and older. And I'm here today because we want to increase major understanding of the new redistricting procedures that are part, that, that came about because voters approved a change in the constitution in 2018, which allows for people to do the redistricting instead of politicians. And as you can see on the second slide that's still on the screen, the citizens and the Michigan Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission, that's what MICRC stands for, and not politicians, will draw the lines. And when I first heard about this, I thought, wow, Sagatuck Douglas Sagatuck Township would be a perfect community of interest. So that's basically why I'm talking to you folks, because I've talked to the township and I'm gonna talk to Douglas and hopefully, we can get something together to the community of interest. And because it's after the census, I'm on slide three, Aaron. After the census, the distribution of congressional seats across the nation is subject to change based on the population movement and incidentally, Michigan is probably gonna lose one congressional seat. But the states get to draw lines for the US congressional and the state house and state senate districts. And every state determines its own process. And the, Michigan is doing this for the first time. California, Arizona, and I think maybe one other state do this independent citizens commission, uh, thing. So it's, but it's a very new process. Okay, so I want to go to, we have 14 congressional districts right now. All right, I'm going to go to slide 20. There's a lot of information on this slide presentation about what is gerrymandering and what is redistricting and that kind of stuff, but I want to not take up your time on that and go to the project that I'm proposing, which is the requirements for redistricting. Before the independent citizens commission can vote on a map, the map has to be tested to ensure compliance with the criteria. And the criteria can be adopted through the majority vote, at least two commissioners from each major political party and two commissioners who affiliate with neither party. So that ensures the nonpartisan aspect of the commission, which is the way it was designed and how people were chosen and stuff like that. But, um, the criteria and the rules on slide 22. The first criteria is that have to have equal population or almost equal and comply with federal law, including the constitution and the Voting Rights Act. The second is they have to be geographically contiguous and the big one that's a change is number three. District shall reflect the state's diverse population and communities of interest that share cultural or hysterical, historic, sorry, characteristics or economic interests. And that is where I thought our communities would make a great community of interest. So in the next slide, public participation, there are going to be 14 hearings. 10, actually 14 before the maps are drawn and then one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, they, they wanted to have so many more meetings, they added, after the maps are drawn. And the public may testify and submit plans and maps and the underlying data, and that's what I would ask the committee members to work on. And then the commission will have to publish their plans and then, uh, the commission and the staff and the attorneys, they may not discuss redistricting matters with the public except at a meeting. So these meetings are going to be very important. Okay, uh, slide number 24. The League of Michigan, the League of Women Voters, right now, we are monitoring the meetings and we are preparing, helping people to prepare their testimony. And if need be, we will testify too. The league is coordinating with P staff, especially Edward Wood, who was at the Holland meeting. He's the, the communications and outreach director. And we, the league is fo- is focusing on finding communities of interest within the population. All over the state, we have over 100 volunteers working to work, to work with people. Okay, on slide 25. What are they and why do they matter? 26. Communities of interest are populations that share cultural characteristics, historical characteristic or economic interests. And it's pretty bare bones, and this is what's in the constitution. So the state of Michigan has a wide, uh, area for creativity when defining a community of interest. Next slide. They are, um, they can't look at, to other states to make a definition. And they, um, can just decide for themselves what their communities of interest, because each state has its own definition and priority for communities of interest. So, um, it's a new concept for Michigan and it is key to the new process because it is the third most important criteria. All right, slide 28. All right, here are some examples of communities of interest. Group that might have Hispanic and Latino populations and, uh, racial groups cannot be the sole defining factor for a community of interest. They have to have other commonalities. But as, as you know, our neighbors to the north or down in the Fenville area, the Pullman area, that they, those folks would have Hispanic, Latino populations and other reasons why they could be communities of interest. School districts with similar issues, agriculture groups like dairy farmers or orchard growers, all the peach, all the fruit farmers along the lake shore. Group sharing a watershed or a lake shore, which is us, Native American tribes and neighborhood associations. These are all examples of, and, and many others. For example, I was thinking like Culver Township, they have a nuclear power plant and they might be a community of interest with Bridgman, and I don't know how they'd work it out to be contiguous, but, uh, there, there are lots of reasons why. And they matter because they are the building blocks for the legislative and congressional districts. So that is why in my email that I sent to you in March, I underlined this, I'm proposing that our three communities and any other contiguous, I have to move my page over, areas around our communities that identify with us, form a community of interest and present a proposed map of our area with testimony at one of the upcoming public hearings. Because, and the other, the big thing is that no one on the commission is from southwest Michigan. There's somebody from Battle Creek, there's somebody who lives in Interlochen, and I think he's there because he's retired. And there's somebody from Reed City and a lot of people from the eastern side of the state. So it is important for anybody in southwest Michigan who feels that they have a group, that they are a community of interest, to make themselves be heard at these, uh, hearings. And the communities of interest matter because they will create fairer and more effective representation and voters will get to elect representatives who pay attention to their interests. One thing that did happen in our history was Alligan County was divided. Uh, some of you might remember, was divided into two congressional districts in 2002, I think. And from M89 North, we were in the second district with Pete Hookstra, and from M89 South, including the city of Fenville, they were in the sixth district with Brett Upton. So it made interesting work, I'm sure, for the Alligan County Commissioners and for the local governments because we were in two separate congressional districts and I thought that that was something that we might want to avoid this time because we are on the edge. So that was another reason why I wanted to bring this to all of you. Um, I made a list of some of the things that I thought are characteristics in my email down toward the bottom of the first page. I'm not gonna go through those, but, and I'm sure that you could think of more. And, um, so we have a lot of, of characteristics that we share that make us definitely a community of interest. I've been working with, uh, a little bit with, uh, John Iber, Hebert, John Hebert for Ganges Township because they're along the lake shore with us. And then I also thought about contacting, um, over toward Fenville a little bit. I don't know. We'll see if they want to get involved or not. But we have a strong community of interest right here. So, uh, that's why I wanted to, uh, bring this to everyone's attention. Do you have any questions?
Kathy, uh, we one question, uh, we talked about getting some community involvement. Can you, can you, uh, you know, kind of explain that or touch base on that a bit, please? Either from council people or other people in the community?
Yeah, I, one of the things that I was told is I cannot speak for the people that I think are the community of interest. So I needed buy-in from the councils of the three governments in order to have them participate. And then any other citizen who would like to be, who was interested in this can speak. And they might even have ideas for other communities of interest in the area too, so. But it's not, uh, it's not a closed group at all.
So we don't really appoint anybody, any
No.
any individuals representing the city of Sagatuck. What we do is encourage, uh, citizens in our community who, who want to be active in this to do what? Do they
Contact me.
contact Cathy Brockington?
Or actually, they should probably contact the city because you guys are the sponsoring, uh, you know, and the city could let me know if there are people that I need to contact, get them up to speed.
Yeah, and I think that's something our city clerk could probably, uh,
Yeah.
wo- wo- work, work with individuals. I know we already have two individuals who are interested. There may be more. But, uh, so, okay, thanks for, for sharing that. Chris, you have some questions?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I was just wondering, Kathy, do you want anything specific from us other than just, uh, recommendation to go forward or what did the other two communities do?
Basically, they, they discussed it and they said, yeah, let's do this. I mean, I think they had, they did, they had a recommendation to go forward.
Okay.
Mayor, this is Garn. Sorry, go ahead, Chris.
The public, the public meeting dates have changed. In the email that I sent you, they were all at the beginning of May and now one is still, uh, in Kalamazoo, it's at May 13th, but there's, uh, June 29th in Missopan and July 1st in Grand Rapids. So we have a little more time to get things organized than we did when I first sent this. And I'm hoping to set up a meeting in the early May with everybody once I get presented in all of governments.
Okay. That was my question, when you wanted to get the group together.
I, I'm waiting until after you do your recycling thing on May 1st, so you don't have to think about other stuff at the same time. Not that you can't.
Okay, uh, we don't have a, a motion on the agenda. I'm not, I'm not really sure a motion is necessary.
After I presented at the township, uh, meeting, they spoke about it later and they, well, I don't think it was on their agenda. I think they just talked about it.
Right, right. And I believe we did have this on, did we have a sign of consent agenda at one time, Ryan? Or it was just information that was set, this was a couple, maybe as much as a month ago or so, I'm thinking.
Very, Mr. Mayor, uh, you did have this on the agenda and I think you appointed Garnett and also Barry.
Right, right. So I, I think we're on board. You know, as far as, uh, you know, or any involvement from, from the city, Kathy, I don't think we need to do anything further. I'll leave it to other council people to comment on.
Yeah, well, there's nothing binding in this. This is strictly just to let people know that we are there and we kind of want to stick together. And then once the line, and to check the maps when they're drawn to make sure we're stuck together. And then after that, when it's final, then we all just keep on going the way we're going.
Okay, all right, thanks. Yeah, any other council person, Scott?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Kathy, thank you for the presentation. Um, if there's strength in numbers, I, I think your idea of gauging Fenville's interest is probably a good one. Um, but thank you for the presentation and, um, it's supportive.
Okay, I'll pursue that a little further then. Thanks, everybody.
Go ahead, Kathy, I'm sorry.
Thank you, everybody, for letting me be, chat with you.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for, uh, bringing that to our attention and, uh, being involved and kind of, uh, heading up the offer here locally. Appreciate it. Next guest speaker this evening, Kristen Armstrong with, uh, Sodik Center for the Arts Updates. Kristen, welcome.
Thanks. And, uh, Aaron, thanks for teeing up, um, the renderings of the plaza. So I just, uh, thank you. This is a, I think a couple of times I've come and done maybe a twice-a-year update, just so everybody is on the same page and can ask questions and knows what's going on. So as Holly alluded to pre-meeting, um, there was a massive sandbox in the parking lot and I wasn't in today, so I don't know if they've started pouring cement. If they do, I'm so excited. But, um, that project, which we are calling our Plaza Project, is doing just that. It's taking what was the parking lot and creating a more flexible hard surface that you can still park on, never fear, you can still park on it. But to be honest, this was one of the great learnings, um, last summer with COVID, was because we were forced to pivot and do everything outdoors, uh, we realized how much, in fact, people enjoy being outdoors for a lot of things. So, uh, we also realized that sitting in our parking lot was not particularly hospitable. It was still the old pie factory parking lot. Um, and so we, uh, in, I guess, at the, at the very end of the summer, we started having conversations about what we could do that would, um, in a reasonable financial way, really enhance that space and make it more flexible for everything from our markets, weddings, special events, classes for kids, concerts, theater performances, just all manner of things, so that you just don't feel like you're standing in a crummy old parking lot. So, um, Richard Harford, who just rotated out as our board chair, he's our chair emeritus now, um, spent his career at Landscape Designs. He's a, an architect, landscape architect. Um, we hired GMB and they created these really terrific renderings to give people an idea of what, kind of how the enhancements, um, will look. Honestly, it's still a very large flat surface, no changes there. Uh, but you can see up the middle, there will be some, some green. So we're sort of bleeding the garden, um, from the side, like over around the perimeter. We've got the strip of green up the middle. Um, we, uh, did some new curb cuts and reshaped the islands up at the top of the lot, which honestly, we had never had a plan to really beautify. So they were what they were, but now they're gonna look much different. Uh, and just really, we've got poles that go down the side and then some poles up the middle and we're gonna be hanging, um, catenary lighting, which is a fancy word for Edison bulbs overhead, um, which you can see a little better in these, to sort of create a canopy, um, overhead. And our, this summer, we will likely, my guess is we'll be using that plaza more this summer than we probably ever will again. Um, until the next global pandemic and we have to be outside all the time again. But it will be exciting to have the new space, uh, ready. And it's, gosh, I, I realized this, like, last month, you guys, kind of crazy. So this is the 19th year, so next year's our 20th year. So in about two decades, that, this community has helped lots So in about two decades, that this community has helped lot line to lot line. That entire pie factory get transformed into a community art center. Even now, um, as far as tearing out the pie factory parking lot and creating this really flexible outdoor space. So when you think about it, you know, the factory line is now the garden and the pavilion, flooding next to lobby, now the plaza in the parking lot, the whole building inside. So every square inch of that facility, thanks to this incredible community. And I'll just add, you know, the the fundraising for this was all done during COVID. So again, people from the community doing some extraordinary things. And I will mention that um, we had a lead gift for this project. Sadly, but also really appropriately and in a lovely way from the estate of Bill Gallagher. So it just feels super appropriate that Bill, who spent, I don't know, thousands of hours in that parking lot during the farmer's market, would in, I guess, you know, celebrating his life after the fact. Significantly gift that kicked off the fundraising efforts from this for Bill. So pretty cool. So the hope is, keep, keep your fingers crossed that we keep having no rain, guys. I know it kind of stinks for everybody's gardens, but boy, it's been great for this project. Um, that we would be able to have the first market, which is Friday, May twenty-eighth, um, in the plaza. And then right after that, as we'll see in a second, we roll into jump into summer and the outdoor performance season. So um, the hope is that it will be ready to go, if not every little detail, at least the plaza itself, uh, the hard surface itself by Friday, May twenty-eighth, which is Memorial Day weekend too. So we would really then roll into the whole summer. So we will absolutely be using the plaza all summer long. And with that, Erin, is it okay if I flip and share my screen now? Okay, I can see that it is. All right. So I was going to do a PowerPoint and then I thought, you guys, what the heck, we're just going to look at the SCA website. Hello, right? So what I just want to quickly roll through with you, because I know most of us don't have time to really do this on our own, um, is using the SCA website. We're just going to, I want to give you a high level overview of what's happening. So the first thing I'll note at the very top is, yes, the gallery is open. By law, with COVID constraints, we can have our gallery open and we have two phenomenal shows that are up there right now. You can come Monday through Friday, nine to five, or if you want to make um, a personal reservation, we can have groups come through and we're happy to help with that. So we can go either way, but the gallery is open and we have two fabulous pieces. So here's the deal, outdoor performances. So everything we learned last summer, we learned a ton, we are repeating again this summer. So all of our performances, theater, concerts, outdoors, once again. You probably don't necessarily, I'll keep track of this, we still don't know from uh, state COVID guidelines when we will be able to do indoor performances or what uh, the numbers or anything will look like. And so in fact, we luckily, we thought of that back in October, we figured we better plan for what we know. And what we knew was that we could do things outside. So therefore, it's another summer of BYOC, Bring Your Own Chair, not Bring Your Own Cocktail, that's in the social districts, this is Bring Your Own Chair. And uh, we'll be using that same format. So what you can see is the performances start with Jump Into Summer and that is the event that thank you for approving the special event permit. We'll be doing both in the plaza, the pavilion, the garden, and then we'll also have family and children's make and take activities across the street in Coughlin Park. So at Jump, we're going to have Mike Maines and the Branches, amazing band out of Nashville. They were supposed to be with us last summer and then COVID. Uh, but we're, we're, we were lucky to bring them back and they'll be here doing great outdoor concert. Food trucks in the parking lot, we'll have our bar open and hopefully we we understand how to do it safely. Hopefully, this will be the first kind of socially distanced fun community thing that we can do. That's still super COVID appropriate. So that starts in June. Then you can see we move to music. Well, actually, I'll go down a little bit more. I'm going to start here. We actually have a Jack Riddle and Allison Swan class, the markets start. We've got our ongoing exhibitions that you can see here. And then we roll into Jump Into Summer and then we've got actually Orleans, um, coming on June twelfth. That show might be sold out or almost sold out. Uh, and then we start to move into all of our summer camps and classes for children, super cool. And then Music Noir, um, also in June. And then, let me see if I can, there's information for you here on summer educational programming and also our digital SCA Now programming. But just for a minute, I'm going to go back up here and I'm going to go to, well, I'm sorry, my Mac is so sensitive. I didn't really mean to touch that, but I did. So hopefully this will load up up for me. Um, I want to let you know about the three summer performances that we're doing. And again, Mason Street is outdoors this year. So we're doing three eight-night performances. Um, and you might kind of have remembered, normally performances would run twenty-one or fifteen days. So these are much shortened, eight day, eight days only. And the, we have a wedding every single Saturday at the SCA. And since we're outdoors, we can't have a competing wedding and a concert. So it's, if you're thinking, what's up with Mason Street this year, you're right on. Mason Street shows are Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Sunday. So we take Saturday off and we take off Monday, Tuesday. And then the next week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Sunday. So each of these shows is four nights, two weeks. So that's how, that's how it goes, which means we have only six thousand tickets this year. In a normal season, we'd have fifteen thousand tickets. So I would just tell you, if you don't have your tickets, don't wait, because I don't think there's going to be tickets um, come the middle of the summer. So we start with Shout, um, which is actually a musical we did like fourteen years ago. Um, it's a five-person cast and so this really allows us to do things safely outdoors on the deck. We are actually going to build a wooden decking over the concrete deck because you can't dance at all on concrete. So we won't have sets that are as glorious as our indoor sets, but it will be more than just the concrete deck. Um, we also have some additional lighting, so it should look a lot chicer, a lot more cool this year. So we start with Shout and then Dixie shows up for the Tupperware Party, hooray. And then we end the season with Just Too Big, um, which is a Kurt Stamm original. This is really fun, you guys, because these are songs, iconic songs from musicals that are just too big for us to ever do inside the theater. So things like Les Mis, Miss Saigon, Hairspray, Wicked, uh, Way Too Big for our little four hundred seat theater. So Kurt has pulled um, classics tunes from a a whole series of musicals. And this will be a five-person musical review, I think, three gals, two guys. And both of the shows, Shout and Just Too Big, live band, we will have a three-piece band. So it will be, I want to say Mason Street light, but it will, it certainly will not be as elaborate as what we're able to do indoors. But it will also be a huge leap up from what we were able to kind of pull off last summer. So that's the summer season and then we also have two cabarets in September. Uh, they're one day each and uh, we're just sort of, you know, continuing to swing it into that really gorgeous performance season. And yep, here's a little more just about um, information about uh, outdoor performance. I'm going to say one thing out loud quickly about indoors, indoor safety. So this winter, we did two key things at the SCA that I'd love for you to know about. Number one, in our HVAC system, we installed an Eye Wave system, which is the ozone producing systems that um, well, kill a ton of things, including COVID. So substantially cleaning up the air through the HVAC heating cooling systems, the entire building as well as the staff quarters. I mean, honestly, obviously, this this serves us going forward in terms of common cold, flu, all those things. So Eye Wave in the HVAC system and we had the entire facility sprayed with an antimicrobial. Um, it's a West Michigan company that actually has been doing this for years in hospitals. And since COVID, as you can imagine, they have an enormous new clientele in schools, churches, and then public venues like performing arts centers. So the deal with an antimicrobial is anything that lands on a hard surface will not linger, it will die. So if I sneeze on you, sorry, I still have sneezed on you. But if I sneeze on, you know, a chair, should not live. Now, if I, and you know, the cleanup is super simple. I keep saying, if you spill red wine, I'm still stuck. Uh, but everything else should just clean right off. So those two really, I think, important safety measures we implemented this winter. So as people are coming back into the building slowly, I hope they feel very good about um, just additional things that we're doing to keep people safe and comfortable. So that is a really fast overview. Uh, the market starts uh, Memorial Day. Oh, and I should add, the market this year is Fridays, starting Memorial Day, and we're adding Tuesdays. So Tuesdays start uh, in June, so Tuesdays and Fridays all through uh, August. And then in September, we'll just do Fridays for the last part of the season. Kids camps and classes run June, July, August. A lot of them are already sold out. So uh, jump online if you're looking for your kids or your own grandkids. So essentially, it is a full summer outdoors, just at a lesser volume, um, unless or until we're able legally, um, with the state guidelines to have more people. We're planning on two hundred and fifty people for performances in the parking lot. And Chief Janik would tell you that parking lot can hold a whole lot more than two hundred and fifty people. So it will still be socially distanced, very spread out. But at least we're able to do two fifty. Last summer, we were only doing like eighty, so it's going to feel much more robust. Kaboom, really fast, lots of stuff. What can I answer for y'all?
All right, council questions?
May I?
Holly?
Uh, that is so impressive, Kristen. I, it's like you just went inside out. I mean, you just flipped the paradigm and you're doing your whole season and you just made it work. So it's really exciting. Um, I think we'll all be ready for that this summer. We need it. So I just want to commend you and your board and everybody that's worked so hard. This is really a jewel. Um, and it looks like it's going to be a lot of fun. Um, I just have one question. Would you be able to change that two fifty number depending? If there, it looks like there's, might be CDC guidelines coming out about social distancing and being outside. They've sort of alluded to that and just wondering.
Yeah, it's really, I mean, the thing for us that I think is true for everybody is it's all about the distancing, obviously. If you don't have to put six feet between people and you can get back to even more like a three and a half foot aisle or not necessarily having everybody that far apart, then you can absolutely add more people. Yeah, and it's very simple, so that's an easy thing.
Great.
You know, you guys, one last thing, a bug I'm going to put in your ear. Um, Ryan and I talked about this informally just the other day. So if, if social districts continue, um, after the summer, if you decide to resurrect them in the fall or further in future years, I would love to speak with you about including the SCA, because you know what, you guys? We have a Class D liquor license. So in the fall, as we do have more things outside, honestly, I think it would be really, really hard for us to keep people from walking literally across the parking lot right next door where the social district is part of, right? So I'll just put that bug in your, something we can think about for the fall if it comes up, but we would love to be part of the social distance continue.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, Mayor.
Yeah, Scott.
Thanks, Kristen. Great presentation. Will there be any changes with the changes to the parking lot in terms of your um, your stormwater volumes?
Oh, wow, Scott, that's a great question. I did not prepare for. Um, I'm going to say no, because actually, now that you say that, it should be better. Because, oh, actually, you're a straight man who asked me this question, so I would say this. I forgot about this. This lot is actually now going to be concrete and porous pavers. So the porous pavers actually will give us more opportunity for the water to sink in well ahead of time, uh, as well as the green strips, which are actually a little bigger than they look in that picture. When you look at the lot in the SCA, it's a pretty big island in the middle. Um, so there's some additional places for water to get in. And then, of course, the trench drain right in front of the um, deck, which was put in last year, stays. But the porous paver is great, great question. And I, I mean, I certainly do hope that we're able to get more into that sand, which, by the way, they dug six feet down and they're like, yeah, you're on top of a sand dune here. No water, good thing, just lots and lots more sand. So great filtration when that water seeps through.
Well, that's, that sounds great and kudos for the lead certification.
Mayor, real quick, Chris, Chris and I, I assume that you all keep track of the data as far as how many people from the local area versus outside the local area participate in your various events. If you happen to know those, that'd be great.
Yeah, I do. Funny, you should ask. I've been talking to Elizabeth about that, um, through ticket sales. So whenever we do community projects or we're trying to gather data, we do have zip code data that we would be happy to share as we try to sift through who's coming, what, when.
Okay, all right. Uh, other council comments or questions? Kristen, thank you for your presentation. I think it's important that we recognize and understand that with COVID, there are sacrifices by by many, including a lot of our businesses, uh, when it comes to the parking situation with the pop-up patios and with the uh, changes with the SCA outdoor performances. I think it's just worthwhile to note that we're in this together. The businesses need to work together. Uh, and and this, this all will pass someday. And it's uh, uh, there really isn't a good answer, you know? It's just that we just have to work together and uh, support such a uh, an organization like this that brings so much good things to to the community. So uh, I'll, I'll close on that. If there's no more questions for Kristen, uh, we'll move on. Thank you, Kristen, very much.
Thanks, everyone.
You bet, you bet. Uh, next on the agenda, Dan Fox with the Fire District uh, meeting report, please, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, all. This will be relatively brief, was a relatively brief meeting by our standards on the nineteenth of April. In order, we approved the fire board approved payment of thirty-five thousand eight hundred seventy-four dollars and change in current invoices, as we always do, reviewed the budget status to that point. Virtually all of the revenues, uh, fire district revenues are, have been received ninety-eight plus percent. Uh, and is at this point eighty-one percent of expenses and that's pretty close to right on track. Chief Janik gave his report. He reviewed incident calls. I won't do that. I believe they're sent to you directly. Um, but noteworthy in that list, the EMS calls continue to be the vast majority of the calls handled by the fire district. And partly because of, and we've always tracked the EMS calls. We are now, it looks like, according to what Chief Janik tells me, able to break them out, break out the EMS calls without violating anyone's privacy by type of call. And I believe there are like sixteen categories of calls. And I'm told that in the initial looks on that, the uh, it 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 reveals a lot of helpful information in terms of the kind of, kind of response calls we're making. I mean, it includes things like falls and calls for wellness checks and so on and so forth. Anyway, that'll be uh, updated and presented to the fire board next meeting. Year to, year to date, forty-four fire-related fatalities and thirty-nine Michigan fires. Let's have any interest, anyone, it's mostly males and it mostly happens in living rooms. Chief also uh, let us know that thank yous were sent by the department or by the fire district to Windwood Property Services, which donated a fire station spring cleanup work and also to several uh, individuals or organizations related to their contributions to the immunization clinic at the public high school, which includes, included a thank you to the public high schools for for hosting it. To also to Sogut of golf carts that I believe Bill Wester provided a couple of golf carts they use. Back alley pizza for a ton of pizza. Uh, M dot for one of those mobile message boards to direct people and Grass, Grass Cup Fire Department for the same, another one of those message boards. Uh, we noted, uh, chief noted a compliment, specific compliment conveyed by the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority Finance Group related to Chris Mantle's work on grant submissions on behalf of the fire district. Nice to hear that. Uh, we also received, uh, because I made it an update on the wage study, which is ongoing. All of the data that we think we need is in hand and that subcommittee will, aims to review that and come up with our findings before the next fire board meeting. And then finally, uh, I don't know if this has made the local news even, but the chief updated us on the Lake Shore Drive washout issue. Not in Sagatuck City, but township, with the good news that the Algen County Road Commission will restore that roadway at that washout site where the sinkhole and the rest of it, allowing the fire department's heaviest equipment to traverse south to get to that approximately sixteen homes that are located south of that. south to get to that approximately sixteen homes that are located south of that washout. And then until now, there was, there were only really compromised ways of trying to arrange for service should it be needed down there. And I believe that's it. If there are any questions, I'm happy to try and answer.
Council, any questions for Dan this evening? Okay, if none, we'll move on. Thanks, Dan, for, for sharing that with us. Next order of business is public comment portion of the meeting. Public is allowed to address council. Well, let's just, just because we only have one action item on the agenda really today. Let's have one council comment section and, I mean, public comment section. And kind of public's allowed to address council and, and anything that's on their mind. If you wish to address council, please wish to be identified. State your name and community of residence and limit your comments to three minutes. Anyone wish to address council?
I do. Renee Zeta, nine eight by Park Street. First, like to thank you all for finally having Park Street addressed. I'm gonna be very happy about that. Secondly, I've currently read that they are postponing the Fourth of July fireworks. Am I correct?
Not exactly.
Well, postponing till September, I thought I read.
Well, maybe Ryan can, can address that. Is that your other, your other?
That, my comment is that I just, on the news this evening, Fauci just, the CDC just changed the guidelines to that wearing masks outdoors may be updated soon. That evidence showed that outdoor risk is really, really quite low. Those were his quotes. And, you know, it just seems like, again, I'm sure we are all feeling this way, that it's just been so long. And I don't see how just fireworks going off in the air can really cause havoc in the sense of being, you know, families are going to be together no matter what, at least mine.
Renee, I just may address that. There is a, the council has not closed the door to, I'd say, allowing fireworks, if that's the, allowing is the right word. There is a, we had a presentation by Mike Johnson on behalf of the business community who are in the process of working diligently to have a fireworks display on the Fourth of July.
Okay, that's Mary.
You're probably still in Florida enjoying yourselves.
Thank you, you guys. I'll be home Friday.
All right, good to see you.
My face starting to break.
All right, thank you. Any, anyone else wish to address council? Okay, Aaron, see anyone?
Not, sir.
Okay, we'll move on then this evening. There's no consent agenda. Next order is request for payments on accounts payables.
Mayor, this is Garn. Move to approve accounts payable in the amount of one hundred and forty-three thousand two hundred and seven dollars and ninety cents.
Okay, we have a motion from, from, by Louis, seconded by Stanton to approve the counts payable as presented. Is there any questions on the accounts payable by council? If none with the Kirk, we, or the, excuse me, the clerk, please call the role on the motion.
Louis?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Peterson?
Yeah.
And Beckett?
Yes, a motion passes unanimously. We have no introduction of ordinances, no public hearings, no unfinished business this evening on the agenda. We're visiting an issue that we had some we had some discussions at our last workshop, or actually special meeting last week regarding the Eagle letter and draft response relative to our water, combined water system from KLSWA. Ryan, you wanna pick this up, please?
Yeah, certainly, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. So it's, it's rather, rather technical, and I think I'll just lead in with the motion, which is the grant authority to the administrator to execute the corrective action plan submitted by Eagle and just entertain questions as they come.
Okay, Mayor, this is Garn.
Yes, Garnet.
Move to grant authority to the administrator to execute the corrective action plan to be submitted to Eagle.
Second.
Beckett.
Okay, we had a motion by Louis, seconded by, I believe, Stanton.
Well, huh, it was Leo.
Leo, I'm sorry. Regarding submitting the corrective action plan to Eagle. Any further questions from or Ryan?
I hope whoever that is is okay.
Okay, so well, if there's no, is there some questions? I don't have any questions on this. I know that there's really an administrative function involving the three managers and the manager out at Cal Lake Sewer and Water who's kind of heading up the efforts. There's much more to come. I think more city involvement is going to be a little bit later and in the process, which is actually going to be an ongoing thing that's going to take probably years, to be honest with you. By the time we work through some of the corrective action questions regarding management of our assets, replacing our assets and expanding the, the, the water system. But I don't know if Ryan wants to comment anymore on that or not. We've had discussions on that at, at Cal Lake. So I'll, again, I'll open it one more time for council to have any questions for Ryan or comments.
So Mayor Ryan, real, so I understand we got a letter at the beginning of the year. And that basically, it looks like the three entities have decided to take this, approach this in a hybrid approach. And it looks like most everything has been responded to in the, pretty recently, except for these corrective action plans, one of which is due by January the first twenty twenty-two. I think there was another one. Oh, yeah, this other one that's due that y'all will probably get done the next nine to twelve months. So those seem to be, there's two kind of big things that y'all need to address, but everything else seemed like it was responded, no problem.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ryan.
That's correct, Garnet. So Cal Lake has, has taken the lead on the responses to Eagle. And we're trying to be as responsive as possible. But the, the mayor is correct in his earlier comments that most of the discussion's going to be happening over the next couple of years when we, when it comes down to the agreements as far as who owns what and how it gets maintained and who, who pays for it.
Okay, thank you. Again, any other council person have any questions for Ryan or comments on this? If none, did we, did we approve the motion?
Yeah, we have. Second.
Yeah.
We just need to vote on it.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So since there are no further comments with the clerk, please call the role on the motion.
Louis?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, a motion carries unanimously. Thanks for working on this, Ryan. I'll give it one more shout out for any public comments. Okay, if none, we, I don't believe those are really new communications. I just think we're kind of updating things that were discussed at the special meeting last week. Any council comment, questions on the public, on the communications? If none, we'll move forward to boards and commissions or committee reports. Anybody wish to make a report this evening?
Mayor, this is Garn.
Yes.
The Track Community Recycling Committee, we had a meeting last Wednesday. Our usual month, monthly meeting. It was, part of it was on the composting. The other part was on actually the beginning, the process of setting up a recycling audit, so stay tuned for that. The committee has been pretty active and we had a really well-attended backyard composting workshop this last Saturday. The, the rain held off. We had about forty people attend, which was really wonderful. And then, of course, everybody knows we've got the Household Hazardous Waste Day coming up on Saturday. I had a few folks withdraw their registrations for conflicts and needing to be out of town. So there are several spaces that have reopened. So I've asked the municipalities to help as much as possible to get the word out and encourage folks to get registered for that. So that's that. That's that report.
Okay, thank you, Garnet. Anyone else have a committee or commission report?
Mayor, I just, I just had a question for Garn. So Garn, what, what happens if people show up at DPW for hazardous waste?
Well, I've built, I've built in a little cushion, so, because I have, I fully anticipate that's going to happen. You know, some of us listen and some of us don't. It's all good. So I think, I think we're okay. You know, the community's been extremely generous. The local churches have started to ante up, for lack of a better word, and that's, that's built us a nice little cushion. So I, I feel really comfortable that we, we really won't have any more than two hundred and eighty folks. I, I really, or vehicles, I should say. So I feel good about it.
Okay, so we just need to all encourage people to sign up. That's what they need to do. And also, there may be some fees involved, so bring your checkbook, no cash.
Yeah, so part of, part of the registration process, Holly, why I'm pushing it so, so much is that once they sign up through the signup genius, I have their email and I've started to do regular updates, if you will, for folks who are going to participate. Today's update was, here's what you can bring. Here's what you can bring, but that'll be a fee. Here's what you really should not bring. And that way I can communicate with them regularly. It also, I also ask where they reside so that I can kind of get an idea of what our participation is by municipality. Right now, it's pretty evenly split, for lack of a better word, third, third and a third, which is exactly what I was hoping for. So that's why I'm really pushing this registration so I can communicate with folks. And some folks have actually reached out to me regarding like excessive amounts of old gasoline. I think I've shared that already, which, which helps. So in, in that communication is also, I don't want to, I don't want to take anybody's cash. I'd rather that you write a check to the city of Sawtooth with HHW in the memo line. That way I can just give those checks right to Peter. I don't want to mess with anybody's money. So that's why I'm really pushing the registration as much as possible.
So you answered my question.
Oh, good.
For those of us who have an appointment, don't really follow directions real well, so I do know that on occasion they'll be bringing stuff that needs to be paid for to recycle.
Yeah.
And you're saying, bring a checkbook, don't bring cash.
Please.
Okay, I'll, I'll mention to that to my, to my people.
Yeah, check your, check your email, Mr. Mayor.
I wrote it down. It's ten bucks for a television, ten bucks for a computer, twenty dollars for a car battery, ten dollars for a small air conditioner. Chris Peterson, shout out to you, and six dollars for per gallon of gas.
Okay, so bring the checkbook. That's the message this evening. Okay, all right, Garnet, thank you. Any other committee reports? I've got one. Cal Lake did meet. And we, I, I think this is something that sometimes is overlooked. Going back, we got a report from the manager, what happened when we had the massive power outage for an extended period of time. Our sewer and water system operates strictly on electrical power or backup generator power. So when we are down close to eight hours, it becomes quite a, quite a challenge on behalf of the utility to make sure our wastewater and water system works. They practice for that contingency. And ours, it was all hands on board that evening. They were there all day and then ended up staying till one o'clock in the morning. Fortunately, we have three permanent generators installed and two portable generators. And the staff had to kind of jump all over the community with the two portable generators to make sure the, the pump, the lift stations, which is where all the sewer congregates before it gets, you know, pumped to the next lift station was functioning. But anyhow, they came through it. They did not have any backups. No one was out without any power. The, so anyways, I just thought it's good to, to, and the board mentioned that to Darrell and his staff and gave him some attaboys for, for their performance on that. It's a, it's a real challenging thing when, when that happens. So I just thought I'd, I'd share that with council. We had presentations. We spent a lot of time with Fleece and Vandenberg because we have a lot of things going on out at, at Cal Lake. Where we have to initiate a risk and resiliency assessment, which is mandated by the EPA. It's really a a catastrophic plan if your systems are attacked, cyber, cyber, cyber attack and you're down. Your water system and so on. And so that's, we'll be working on that. We approved a a cost of twelve thousand dollars with Fleece and Vandenberg to put such a risk and resiliency assessment together. For those who are interested, our water system is not, there's nothing online with our water system. So there are, everything is, it's, we, we, we put a state-of-the-art system in several years ago. And, and so it's nothing that is, is, is online that anybody can, can access. So that's, that's happening. Well, we approved four thousand dollars for flow testing of our water system. This is for firefighting purposes and the establishment of ISO community rating. We approved eighty thousand dollars for cleaning and closed circuit televising of our sewer systems. This is an ongoing project. We do about twenty-five percent of our system every year. Then you turn around and start over again. We approved over thirty thousand dollars in engineering cost to replace generators at Lift Station One, which is the, the block building you see across from Peterson Mill. The most critical piece of infrastructure, other than our wastewater treatment plant in, in, in the, our, our sewer system because all sewer from Sawtooth and Douglas crossing the river ends up in that plant. And then it's forced out through what they call a force main out to the sewer and water plant for treatment. That is a, pretty much an original generating system on diesel. We're going to put in a natural gas generator, but it needs to be completely re-engineered. So, and then the other permanent generator that's going to be replaced is at the two township water wells, which are on the south side of the township. You can easily see them from Blue Star Highway. Those two wells are the most productive in our system. They probably produce about sixty percent of the water that comes into our water system and heads up, up at the reservoir. Again, that is a diesel generator, will be replaced with natural gas. We may have to build an accessory building for it. So this is all what the engineering fees are, but very critical infrastructure that we're working on. And we approved the purchase of two additional portable generators at a hundred and fifty thousand dollar plus to kind of fill out our our, you know, backup system when we have to have roving generators in the community. Real expensive projects, but it's things that we have budgeted for. And so I just thought I'd share that with you. I have nothing else from sewer and water. So that kind of wraps up our meeting, our agenda. Other than council comments, council, anybody wish to address, have anything to say? No one wants to go on twice.
Yeah, Mayor, sorry. Yeah, Mayor, sorry. And Ryan, this isn't a surprise, so not intentionally putting you on the spot. I shared that communication that I got from Dick Waskin regarding the temporary traffic signs. So Dick is obviously curious where we are with getting those. And I know you sent me a response, but I was unable to open it. So I don't know if you have a response regarding those.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Dick's email went into my junk mail, so it didn't hit correspondence. But Mayor Beck and I discussed his request a few days back, and it certainly could hit a future agenda. I know that it's probably a little bit complicated in that we'd have to get the Department of Transportation involved and some other groups, but certainly can hit a future agenda.
Okay, yeah. Traffic lights have been looked at many times over the years I've been involved in. It's not as easy as it sounds because the state has got a lot of input on where you can put them, how many you need. They usually base their decisions on traffic studies of little traffic counters that you see here and there. So you know, I think maybe we could get more information from the engineer, all that's involved with that, if if council's interested in learning more about that. But that was kind of the gist of my what, 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 when Ryan brought this up. So just just sharing that.
All right, Mayor, I, I think proactively, without getting into too much of a discussion early on, I know that our traffic has certainly increased down the Blue Star, coming from the south to the north as a result of the highway construction. So, yeah, I I think it's certainly worth.
I was really kind of surprised some of these things haven't been put in by MDOT. You know, now they're, they're the ones who just put them up when they want to. But I don't know if Ryan's got something more to share on that or not. It's going to be a bugger, I tell you, folks. Coming from the south to north, you're starting to see that traffic now. Like, you know, I go in and out of my place of business across Blue Star. It's going to be tough to go from the west side to the east side of Blue Star Highway. And I know Garnet's seeing the same thing down at the, you know, at Isabel's. Any other council comments?
This is Chris.
Yes, Chris.
My two, my two cents on this is, I do think it's probably something we're going to look at a little bit further as we get to more traffic, but I think a nice way to do it would have put it, put the stoplight at Allegan so that when they do stop, they don't back up the whole bridge. Just throwing that out.
Yeah, and that that has been looked at, I mean, discussed. I'm not saying we we cover all, covered over the basis all year. That would be an Allegan County Road Commission decision there. So you got a whole never different set of bureaucracies involved. So anyways, it 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 might be, maybe there's something the engineer can kind of put a little bit overview together on that, what's, what's involved. Maybe I can talk with Ryan a little bit about that and be part of our strategic session.
Mr. Mayor?
I think we've already, Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Yes.
I think you're asking for me. I think we'd already done it way back when the engineers started with, I think, the bike trail. There were several things that we put together about having a, the parking or the stoplight at Brewster. So I think a lot of that work is always, not with the numbers we're going to see, but at least the counting that that had happened back then.
Yeah, and I don't know if those are still, you know, current count or anything like that, but again, you know, I don't claim to know everything. I just know that we talked about them before. There are a lot more involved than just going out and buying a stoplight and sticking it up by the road with a, you know, so Ryan, you want to close that out? At all?
Yeah. Can I ask if you'd like us to add that to a future agenda?
Well, I I I think that, you know, it's probably going to come up with the bike path study too. So I just don't know if we're being redundant in in that regards.
Let me make a correction. It, it, it is, it was proposed, but it, it has not been deeply studied by the bike trail previously. I think, Chris, there, there is a study that exists. I talked to Janik, I've talked to Ken Truster about it. And what Chris is alluding to, I'm not sure if it has to do with public safety. I think it's quite a few years old. But yeah, we will, we will be looking at it. I, I would be interested if MDOT has any sort of temporary light or if they provide that to communities. I know on the east side of the state that that's something that you would frequently see when you sort of get in these detour situations. So that, that is something I'm curious about. And as far as the bike trail, I don't know. We definitely will be looking at that, but I don't know how long that's going to take, but it's on the menu.
Okay, well, Ryan, maybe we can, when we have our little meetings about setting future agenda with Mayor Rotema and myself, and you, we can kind of see, see if how we can fit this in, you know, along with the rest of our projects. All right. Well, thank you. Any other common council comments? If none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Okay, I got a motion by Louis, seconded by Scott Dean to adjourn the meeting. Clerk, please call the role.
Thank you for calling that, sir. And that was, I think, a three-way tie.
Yeah, I just, I just made a call.
Good job, Dean.
Yes.
Yes.
Peterson?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, Beckett.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Enjoy the rest of the evening.
Good night, everybody.